It is 6:10 PM on Monday, April 19th, 2021, and I am calling this meeting of the National Board of Education to order. As President of the National Board of Education, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order 12, Pursuing to Order 202004, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access the Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the district's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, The meeting ID is 82012299694, and the passcode is 718701. To join by computer, the meeting ID is 82012299694, and the passcode is capital G, zero, seven, one, capital C, capital W. Again, this information is provided on our agenda. It's the third page of the agenda, and that is available on our website. Okay. This evening, I have a couple of requests before we get started. And the first of those is that I request that all comments by both Board members and the public be respectful and refrain from racist or sexist statements. I'm also asking that the public who are in attendance not to use the chat, because the chat is a part of the record and people watching from home cannot see it, and that they please save their comments for the public comment periods, of which we have two this evening. I'm also asking that we keep our comments focused on the business of the Board and not about Board members or any staff members' personal lives. So at this time, I would like to ask our clerk, Ms. Bishop, to call the roll.
Ms. Bishop is here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Johnson's not here. Mr. Guarino?
Here.
Has Ms. Seem returned yet? I don't see her. I'll let you know when she pops back in. And Ms. Timmons? Ms. Timmons?
Here.
I didn't hear you. We also have... Sorry.
I was just gonna say, Ms. Timmons is very quiet this evening.
Yes. We also have Ms. Consella, Dr. McKinney, Ms. Jengris, Dr. Andred, Mr. Donovan, Mr. Parker, and our student representative, Ms. Brunell, and then some members of the public. But I think that's... If I missed anybody, let me know.
No, I think you did well. Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Okay. So this evening, our agenda is deceptively short, but I think we're gonna find that it's meatier than it looks on paper. So to get started, we have that memo from Ms. Jengris, our Director of Athletics, regarding the Spring Athletics update. Ms. Jengris, did you want to speak to your memo?
Sure, I can certainly do that. Thank you for allowing me to come. Dr. McKinney had asked me to come speak with you tonight and provide a little bit more information than what was provided in the memo, especially regarding mask-wearing during competition, as well as to answer your questions. So what is being proposed, it's important that everybody knows, is not contrary to any NHIAA or Tri-County League guidelines. The NHIAA governs over our high school events, and the Tri-County League governs over our middle school events. Both have recommended mask-wearing, but neither has mandated it. When we were here talking about the spring reopening, the reopening plan did include information about possibly making changes as the spring progressed, and any changes that we make, we would first consult with the Public Health Department. You know, they're the experts where all things COVID are concerned, so they would be the ones that would help us to make decisions. So as I'm sure everyone in this room is aware, masks are very controversial. There are as many people arguing for masks in athletics as there are people fighting against them. And unfortunately, people feel very, very strongly about whichever side they're on. So although New Hampshire statewide mask mandate has expired, the Nashua citywide mask mandate is still in effect until further notice. In addition to that, after the Governor's announcement on Thursday, the NHIAA Sports Medicine Committee held a special meeting on Friday specifically to discuss the Governor's announcement, and they are recommending continued use of masks in all interscholastic athletics through the end of the school year. Just to be clear, the NHIAA, although they govern over the regular season, they do not run or manage any of our events until we get to the playoffs. So they can't really require us to do anything during the regular season other than follow the regular bylaws. So the Executive Council of the NHIAA will meet in May to determine whether or not they're going to reverse their decision about wearing masks in tournaments. Again, right now, we are expecting end-of-season tournaments when the stakes are at the highest. Again, in tournament, you lose, you're done. The stakes are the highest. At this point in time, we're anticipating masks will have to be worn. Speculation from those in the know is that that policy will not be reversed. But obviously, we won't know until the middle of May. The doctors and the athletic trainers on the Sports Medicine Committee are in full support of students wearing masks during competition. They feel strongly that it might affect their performance, but there's no medical evidence that it is dangerous for students to wear masks. All coaches, staff, spectators are still required to wear masks 100% of the time. So in the memo, what the proposal was, we met with Public Health on Thursday, April 8th, and then they met with their full team on that following Friday, and they're in support of students having a choice to remove masks in competition. So that's what's outlined in the memo, that students would still wear them during practices, walking to and from facilities, on buses, all of those things. Everybody not playing in the game would have masks on at all times, but that students actually physically competing would have a choice. That being said, this really doesn't change anything for us. As stated in the memo, if our opponents are required to wear masks, then we will wear masks. Right now, in Division 1, there are very, very few schools that do not require masks during competition. So basically, if we don't wear masks in competition, we will not have opponents to play. So although we're kind of trying to look forward and have that option to not wear them in competition, there's, I would venture to say, more than 90% of our games that we would still be wearing them. As I said previously, the NHIAA is still requiring masks in all tournaments, so we would obviously wear them at that point. The one thing I did want to talk about a little bit is track, because track at the high school level is very unique, as it is the only sport this spring where the regular season is going to matter. All of our other sports are having open tournaments, which basically means if you want in the tournament, you're in. Whereas track, they have to qualify during the regular season, and the top 10 or 12, depending on the event, are the only kids that are gonna compete in the state tournament. So we've had some pretty hearty and healthy conversations amongst the Division 1 athletic directors that is it fair for one school to say, "We're not wearing masks that attract me," and their kids qualify, but another school requires their kids to wear masks, and their kids don't qualify. So that's kind of the one that's pretty controversial right now. So in short, the memo, based on the recommendation... I shouldn't say recommendation. Based on support of public health, they are saying that players... And we're asking that players have the option to remove masks in competition, but it's really not gonna be much of a change because of what I've talked about earlier. Just as a side note, I just want everybody, not only people in the meeting, but also in the public who may be watching and listening, the kids have been fantastic. They are wearing their masks. They're doing what their coaches are asking. Obviously, as they're running and jumping and diving and doing all kinds of things, the mask slides down. Coaches are asking them to put them back up. They put them back up, and they move on. So I just want that out there, that the kids are doing an unbelievable job as they have been all season long. So that's a little bit more information about masks than what was in the memo. So... I guess the questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jengris. I can't necessarily see everybody because we are on two pages. So I will do my best, and if you feel like you have your hand up and I don't see you, just shout out. Ms. Seem, I saw you.
Well, I just have one question. Basically, do we want to make a motion then that we support what you have just said? That if they choose not to, under the circumstances you described? I see Dr. McKinney has an answer, so I will yield the floor to him.
May I go ahead, Madam President? Yep. I just want to advise the Board that the only difference in here is the piece on consultation with Mass from Public Health around removing their masks for some competitions. But otherwise, we're still complying with NHIAA guidelines and the Tri-County League. So the Board previously adopted that in the reopening plan and the presentation for Spring Athletics. So it's not necessary to have a motion if you're comfortable proceeding and having administration to enforce the proposal that's been adopted and presented, that we can move forward.
So I'm sorry. We already voted on this proposal in the past, you're saying?
Previously, the Board voted on the parameters and guidance for NHIAA and Tri-County League for our high school and middle school athletic programs, schedules. A lot of that was in the reopening plan in August 2020. And then again, we presented something similar when we presented Spring Athletics a while ago.
So if we... If our prior motion, just to be clear, because I remember talking about this last week, if our prior motion was to follow the NHIAA guidelines, then they're saying masks at all times. So we would need a motion if we wanted to change that to allow students to take their masks off during competition?
Can I just jump in? Sorry.
Yeah.
Again, the NHIAA is recommending mask-wearing. They are not requiring it. Until we get to tournaments. Once we get to tournaments, then they can require it because they have the final say in any tournament game.
Feels like... Oh, go ahead, Ms. Seem.
If I wanted to make that motion, Mrs. Jengris, I would make a motion... Basically, I would say I make a motion that those athletes who desire to remove their mask during competition may do so at their own discretion, or...
If I may, Ms. Seem?
Please.
Rather than...
That's what I'm asking.
That rather than stating it that way, I would prefer you state it to accept the memo as written, because the student will not always have the choice. For example, if we play Salem High School, Salem has already said, no matter what happens, they're wearing masks the entire season, all the way through until the end of the year. So if we play Salem, those students will not have the choice to wear masks or not. Their choice will be, wear the mask and play, or don't wear the mask and don't play.
May I ask you? Yeah, and I hear what you're saying, and it makes sense. May I ask you one more question, though? If you... Are we saying, bottom line, that the only way to get it to where they don't have to wear that mask during play if they choose not to is if the Governor comes down and makes an executive order?
I don't think so. There are a few schools. For example, if the memo is accepted as it's written, when North and South play each other, since they're both governed by this Board of Education, they would have the option, North and South, we don't have to wear masks.
That's the motion I make, Lisa. Thank you.
When, again, when we play Bishop Gerton, Public Health has said we don't have to wear them in competition in Nashua. So when we play BG, we could also remove masks then.
So I propose that we accept that we accept the program as presented in the... What was your exact verbiage?
In the memo.
In the memo. Thank you. That's my motion. I'll second.
There we go. Okay, thank you. I kept pressing it, and it wasn't going up. So we have a motion by Ms. Seem that we accept the guidelines in the memo as presented.
Thank you.
And that was seconded by Ms. Brown. And then I also saw Ms. Brown's hand up, and then Ms. Bishop's hand up. Am I missing anybody on the list? Okay, it doesn't sound like it. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
So this may sound a little short. I actually seconded the motion to get kind of things moving along. In all honesty, I don't really think we need a motion on this. I think that we can just accept the authority of the Athletic Director and the Superintendent based on the verbiage of our previous motion. But I like to get this meeting moving. So there you go.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Bishop?
Thank you. My question is, first off, I'm grateful that Public Health and, you know, medical professionals weighed in on this. Makes making decisions easier when science is behind it. Quick question. If we make... If we remove a mask mandate for Nashua Athletics, that means whatever city or town is coming in to play with us, they don't have to wear one as well?
Um, no. They would still be governed by whatever their school district says. Just like, for example, last week, we were playing Merrimack. Merrimack is not required to wear masks during competition, but at that time, we still were. So when we played at them or they played at us, masks were worn by both teams.
So in what... Excuse me. In what situation would an out-of-town team be playing without masks with us?
Only if their school board superintendent community, like ours, if they have the rule in place that they also have the choice during competition, then that's where athletic directors talk to each other. We talk to each other all the time about our protocols. You know, hey, do you guys have to wear masks? Yes. Okay, we're both wearing masks. Do you guys have to wear masks? No. We don't either. So we have that choice when we play that opponent. Whether it's home or away, it's about the two teams playing each other, regardless of where that game is played.
And then it would kind of be always at the highest level of safety?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And you want me to remove my motion?
No, I think...
Clear. Thank you.
I think it makes it clear, frankly. Did anyone else have any questions? Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I was wondering if the city's mask ordinance doesn't that affect us? And... I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mrs. Raymond. I'm sorry, I just keep barging in. I do believe, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe the mask mandate is for inside buildings. I don't believe that the mask mandate is outside. So for instance, if you're out walking in your neighborhood in the city of Nashua, I don't think there's a mandate that you have to have your mask on. So because all of our spring sports are outdoor events, I think we're okay.
Okay. So I'm just wondering... So Public Health said that they were okay with not wearing masks for these events, for these competitions, rather. So they... As Ms. Bishop said earlier, that Public Health signed off on that?
They were in support of this change.
Okay.
Again, assuming all other safety protocols are in place. Coaches are still wearing them. Spectators are still wearing them. And if at any point in time we see a spike in numbers, we go back to masks at all times.
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. Guarino asked about the mask ordinance. And it just... And the mask ordinance says, "In the city of Nashua, everyone over the age of 10 is required to wear a face covering in public settings where it is hard to maintain a distance of six feet from others." It doesn't say anything about indoor or outdoor. It just says, "in public settings, if you're over 10, and it's difficult to maintain distance." So for me, I can't support the motion to take that away because I don't think that... I don't think, in many of our games, people are maintaining a distance of six feet. Now, like, I'm thinking of watching my daughter play soccer, and those kids are all over each other. So personally, I can't support it. But certainly, the will of the Board is the will of the Board. So I know Ms. Brown has a second comment. Did anyone else who hasn't spoken want to have a question or comment before we go around to round two? Okay, no, nobody? Go ahead, Ms. Brown. Oh, Ms. Brown is waving her hand at me that maybe she didn't have her hand up. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Jengris.
Jess, I pulled up the email. If you want, I can read you directly what they sent me from Public Health. Okay, I'm seeing Mrs. Gilio nod. "So the incidents response team met this morning, and we discussed mask use during high-intensity activities. We support school discretion in having athletes not wear a mask while actively engaged in high-intensity competitions. But masks should be required during all other aspects of team participation. A wording suggestion can be, 'Face masks should be worn at all times, with the only exception being when actively engaged in competitive play. Players should be mindful of social distancing as much as possible while on the playing field.'"
Thank you. That was helpful, I think. Anyone else? If I don't see any hands, then I think we should proceed to the vote. And just to make sure that we've got it... Oh, where did I write it down? The motion was to accept the guidelines in the memo from Ms. Jengris this evening. All right, I don't see any. So go ahead.
So Ms. Bishop votes no. Ms. Gilio?
No.
Jesus. Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson is not here. Mr. Guarino?
No.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Sorry, Ms. Timmons, you're quiet.
I said, no.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons.
So that's six noes. Oh, I'm sorry, no. Five noes and three yeses.
Okay. So the motion fails. So I believe at this time we would probably be best to have a motion saying we accept it with the exception of requiring masks during play.
That was gonna be my question.
That way, it is clear. So I will make that motion, that we accept the memo with the exception of continuing to require masks during play.
I will second.
Ms. Brown, I saw your hand.
Sorry, did we get a second?
Mr. Guarino.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
I saw Ms. Brown's hand, but now I don't know if she wants to speak or not.
Yeah, no, I'm just... I'm really... I didn't see an alternative motion even coming to the table tonight. I'm pretty surprised that our Board of Education isn't supporting the Athletic Director and the district personnel, who also took the advice writing this, of Public Health. I feel like we are, in one breath, we're complaining that people who are outside of their expertise are making complaints. And then, in another place, we're sitting here doing exactly the same thing. And this memo, the way... And honestly, I would have advocated for it if I really thought it was gonna fail, because I thought we were gonna support our administration and our athletic director here. I would have said this two minutes ago, and I apologize to the people in the community for not seeing this coming, was blindsided. The... The way this memo is written, it adheres to the Nashua ordinance. It says that unless the Nashua city ordinance, if you're working out, even indoors, like if you're working out at the YMCA or at Workout World or Orange Theory, you can take your mask off while you're actively working out. Other than that, this actually says, this is more strict than what our city ordinance guideline says. Parents have to wear it on the sidelines. Coaches have to wear it on the sidelines. Players have to wear it on the sidelines. The only time they're not actively wearing a mask on the field, indoors or outdoors, is while they're huffing and puffing and running, or whatever their event is. I'm guessing... I'm gonna vote no on the motion, not because I'm opposed to masks or I have an opinion either way. It's because I think it's very short-sighted of our Board to continue to play politics with a decision that was really well-crafted, really well-researched, and very well-supported by our Athletic Director and the administration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brown. And just to speak to my motion, and then I'll get to you, Dottie. I will say this, that this motion is in line with the NHIAA recommendations. It's also in line with the ordinance, and that the ordinance says you can remove your mask if you can maintain six feet of social distancing. And I am not convinced that that is possible on the field of play. And many of the calls that I've gotten from parents over the last two weeks requesting that we remove the mask requirement that we remove the mask requirement have pointed out, the kids are breathing all over each other on the field of play, and that was fine in the past, and it should be fine now. With the rising number of cases, and the fact that 25% of new cases are under the age of 18, I cannot in good conscience go against what the NHIA is recommending at this time. I appreciate our Public Health, and Lord knows, I appreciate Ms. Jengers. I tell her that all the time, and I appreciate everything that she's brought to us. I think that requiring one line to be changed in a one-page document is not really questioning her authority or her expertise. We respect both Public Health and Ms. Jengers, and I resent the implication that there's a political bent to this at all, as the administration is in contact with Public Health. So am I, and I don't see this as going against either group. Ms. Odin?
Thank you. Can I ask, am I wrong? Is it my understanding that the football players were able to go on the field and play without a mask, but when they went to the sidelines, they had to put a mask on?
Yes, there was not a mask mandate in the fall for athletics.
Okay, thank you.
And? Can you see my hand, Heather?
I did not. Go ahead, Sandra. Oh, you're, I don't see you at all. Your camera's off.
And I don't know how to get it on, so, so you'll all have to live without my beautiful face, sorry.
That's all right. Shout it out, I don't miss you.
I just want to say that, that I think there's a difference in young kids, who are harder to contain than, than kids at the junior high and high school, who, who are running hard. And I have to tell you, when you're running hard with a mask on, whether there's a science or not, if you've ever tried to run even without a mask, it, I can't even talk with people with that mask on, but it doesn't make me feel like I'm suffocating. And so to run as hard as you would run in track, or basketball, or any of those sports, and basketball obviously isn't the good example. The better example are the ones that they can maintain some of that social distancing that we're talking about. But, but I do, I think that, and so again, one shoe doesn't fit all, all feet, because I think that the, the, the young people that you're speaking about, Mrs. Raymond, are probably younger, and younger students are harder to, they get excited, and in their excitement, they forget about the rules. And I don't even think it's an intent to, to be disobedient. I think it's just they're young, they're young, and they want to have fun and be young. And so, but I think for these older students, I, I think to, to deny them that ability would, or my conscience would be wrong. So, but we're never going to, as in other cases in pandemic, we're never going to all agree. So, I will be voting with Mrs. Brown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dean. Ms. Bishop?
So I just want to state my, my question about, you know, if other towns come in and play. My concern is not, I mean, my concern is with students breathing heavily on each other, which is exactly how COVID is transmitted. But it's also kind of out-of-town people coming in, and whatever their city ordinances are. But this is kind of an issue of comfort versus safety. A lot of our kids played perfectly fine in the fall, wearing masks the whole time. They may have been uncomfortable, but I think they recognized that they were, you know, being safe for the greater good. So that's how I'm looking at it, is comfort versus safety, and safety's always paramount.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Anyone else? Ms. Brown?
Um, I just would like to, for the record, mention that Public Health from Nashua weighed in on the original document that Lisa presented us. So, they are experts in safety. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other hands. Ms. Bishop, would you like to call the roll, please?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
No.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Johnson is not here. Oh, I should mark that differently. Mr. Gorino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Five yeses, three noes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Thank you, Ms. Jengers, for coming this evening. Hopefully, well, don't, don't speed. Drive safely to the lacrosse game this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything to add or remove from the consent agenda? I don't see anybody. All right, so then I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. Mr. Andre, were you raising your hand, or just, no, okay. Ms. Bishop, when you're ready?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown? Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Dur-Gorino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Do we have any communications outside of the consent agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. We have come to our first public question and comment period, limited to items on this agenda. So if people are planning on calling in, now would be a good time. What I have done is to write down people as they came in. We have been trying to figure out a way to do this fairly, so that everyone who comes to talk has a chance to talk. So I'm going to ask everybody to limit their comments to two minutes. I was hoping to have like a kitchen timer that I could do this on, but I was unsuccessful in finding one that could do just two minutes. So, I'll be using my phone timer again. I'm sorry, yes. Any questions or issues with that, those on the board? I don't see any hands. All right, so let me get my timer going. So, in the, I'm just calling people in the order that I saw their names. So the first person is Ms. Prince. Go ahead, Ms. Prince.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for being here tonight, and I respect everything that you guys do. I know it's not an easy job. I'm also thankful that you just respected the city mask ordinance. There are doctors and marathon runners who have run with masks, and it doesn't reduce the oxygen, so maybe they don't have the right type of mask. I suggest that people start looking into the right types of masks where they can run comfortably, so it won't be as much of a burden, especially that it's different from the fall. We have a new variant now, and it spreads much faster from person to person. If you look in Michigan, 40% of their clusters were caused by schools and youth sports. In particular, it was the soccer league outside. So, it is a concern, and I'm happy that you voted the right way on that particular issue. And also, if we look at the UK variant in Canada above us, they said that 96% of their cases are the UK variant, causing all their hospitalizations right now, and it is affecting children. Massachusetts said the same thing, kids as young as five years old. So I do appreciate what you're doing, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. Okay, so the next person on my list is Reagan Lampier. Oh, I forgot to say, please identify yourself. Ms. Prince did, but, and say where you're, where you reside. So, Ms. Lampier? Ms. Concilla, are you able to unmute Ms. Lampier? Perhaps she didn't actually want to speak? All right, we'll come back. The next person who came in was Suzanne Vale. She's still here? Ms. Vale, did you want to comment?
No, actually, thank you.
Okay, all right. So after that, I have Alicia Houston. Ms. Houston, did you wish to make a comment this evening?
No, I actually didn't, but thank you.
Okay. After that, I have, it just says Christina, so if you could state your first and last name, and where you reside, and if you have a comment.
Christina Johns. I reside in Portsmouth, and I just came to listen, and also don't have a comment at this moment.
Okay, thank you. And the last person that I had was Frankie, but I think that they left. Do we have any other people waiting to comment, Ms. Concilla?
That's it, that's all I have.
Okay. So that ends our public question and comment period for this evening. So, next on the agenda is the superintendent's comments. Take it away, Dr. McKinney.
Thank you, Madam President. Just have one thing for you this evening. Congratulations to Vedant Attil for winning one of four top spots to advance to represent New Hampshire at the National Math Counts Meet in May, which will be held virtually. Vedant is an eighth grader at Elm Street Middle School, and returns for the second consecutive year as a state finalist and national competitor. Math Counts is a prestigious math competition with chapter, chapter invitational, state, and national rounds, which aims to make math and problem solving fun. The national winner receives a $25,000 scholarship sponsored by Raytheon. Best of luck, Vedant.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McKinney. Did anyone have any response to Dr. McKinney's superintendent's comments this evening? Okay, seeing nobody. Congratulations to that eighth grader from Elm Street. That's fantastic. I hope he goes on to win the next level. Okay. And then next is student member of the board comments. Ms. Brunel, do you have any comments this evening?
Today, I went into school for the first time for this whole year, and I'd have to say that I had a very nice time. It was wonderful to see everyone, and just be in person with my teachers, and it was very interactive. And I think that despite all the hurdles and everything that our community and the whole world has gone through this year, I think that we've overcome a lot to be in a place that we are today.
Great, thank you, Ms. Brunel. And just to mention for the record, I think we said it at the beginning, but I don't remember now. Mr. Dunn is at that lacrosse game that Ms. Jengers just went. So, best of luck to Mr. Dunn and his teammates. Okay, Committee on Budget, do you have any updates for us, Mr. Gorino?
Sure. Just a quick update, that the Board of Education Budget Committee did, did approve the, the administration budget of an increase of 1.71%. And so now it goes to the City Hall, and the mayor, and the alderman. So we will await to hear what they have to say. And then we actually, once we approved it in the Budget Committee, we, we convened as a, a special board of education, and we approved that. So, that's really all I have. So.
Thank you, Mr. Gorino. I think that the aldermen meet in May to discuss the budget. Typically, Dr. McKinney, well, the superintendent and the president of the board go to, with Mr. Donovan, to present the budget to the city. I just sit there, I don't actually contribute anything to the conversation. It's mostly Mr. Donovan. So, that should happen sometime this May, and then we'll see what the next steps are. Hopefully, they accept it. Okay, the next item on the board, on the agenda, is the Committee on Finance and Operations. Ms. Johnson was not able to make it tonight, so Ms. Odin said that she would present the information from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. First motion is to recommend to award the five-year contract for Nashua School District athletic uniforms to stadium systems.
Okay. Okay, that was seconded by Ms. Brown. Okay, did you want to speak to it, or did anyone have any questions?
Well, I would like to say, we have been dealing with them. I think we're just coming off another five-year contract with them, and they have been exceptional. And it was highly recommended by Ms. Jengers. Mr. Donovan, do you have anything to add?
Um, just a correction. This is not, this is the company, we've done a lot of business with them, but not uniform business. We had a different entity that we had purchased uniforms with. So this will be, we have purchased lots of equipment with them, but this will be the first time we have a uniform contract with them.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I didn't, I missed that. Well, Ms. Jengers has been really pleased with them, and they have, they have a nice rewards program for our, our district also. So, thank you. I think Ms. Brown wanted to speak to it.
I was just going to add, if, if you don't mind, thank you. I was just going to add that, it's exactly that. It came very highly contracted, highly recommended from Ms. Jengers, from a service perspective, and it was within, I think, 100, within $100 of the other quote. It was very, very similar, but she said their service has been exceptional.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Okay. Anything else regarding this motion? I don't see any. Ms. Bishop, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Oh, I, sorry. She is not here. Mr. Gorino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? I'm so sorry, Ms. Timmons, I did not hear you again.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Motion passes.
Move to accept the 10-year agreement between Bishop Gerton High School and the Nashua School District for the use of Stella Stadium in the amount of $135,000.
Second. Thank you. Ms. Brown seconds it. Ms. Odin, did you wish to speak to it?
I'm going to let Mr. Donovan speak to that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, back eight, 10 years ago, when we replaced the turf, Bishop Gerton shipped in about $80,000, and they had a payment plan over that time period. That agreement ended, well, will end June 30th of this year, and they reached out to us, and they'd like to continue to contribute towards the stadium and the potential needs that we will be having for turf or other improvements. So they put together a proposal, which Dr. McKinney and Lisa Jengers and myself, and we discussed it, and then we talked at the finance and ops. So, we're, we're all in support of this. I think it would be a, a good thing to move forward with.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gorino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Ms. Timmons, I cannot hear you at all this evening.
Yes, I'm on mute, I'm not on mute.
No, you're not. Thank you.
Motion passes.
Move to award the contract for elementary fiber cable upgrade to Telnet Technologies in the amount of $51,234. No, yes, account 91.1.992225-53628.
Okay, I'll second this one.
No discussion?
Mr. Donovan or Ms. Odin, did you have anything to say on it?
Just that Director Rodriguez put together bids on this. It's within about $300 from the lowest bid, and we've had a lot of experience with this firm. They're local, they've done a good job. So, the decision, the recommendation is made to use Telnet for this elementary fiber upgrade.
Can you speak to how this is going to help the elementary schools?
Well, this will upgrade the fiber. We've done that at half the elementary schools. We've done it at the high schools. We will be doing it at the middle schools. It'll probably be done pretty soon at Fairgrounds, as that project's wrapping up. And we'll be working on that over the next year at Penachuk, and obviously at the new school. So this will give a lot more capability, a lot more power and access to all the students and faculty in their buildings.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any. Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes, but I want to thank all of the committees for all the work they do to bring these, these recommendations forward to us, and for the time that it saves us during our, our lengthy meetings, to have their support for what we're approving. So I do vote yes.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
I heard you that time. Motion passes.
Okay, move to award the contract for elementary school network upgrade Phase 2 to RTM in the amount of $197,917 from account 91.1.99225-53628.
Second.
Ms. Brown? Any questions or comments on this one? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, move to award the contract as our internet service provider to Comcast for $3,315 per month, account 91.1.992225-55109.
That was seconded by Ms. Timmons. Any questions or comments?
I will say, this was more than the other bid. I believe we only had two bidders on this. Excuse me, and the reliability that they have guaranteed us was substantially higher than the other, the other company. So because the internet is so critical in what we're doing, we decided to go with the one that was a little bit more expensive, but more reliable, that gave us more reliability.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Questions? Seeing none, go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Feels like that's what I pay a month for cable. I want that discount. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Sorry, Ms. Timmons, what?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. And I don't look up when I'm taking this because I'm obviously following the list. So I apologize if you've been miming your answer.
I'm saying yes, you're just not hearing me.
Okay.
Move to approve a contract with Envirovantage Inc. for the abatement of asbestos-containing material from Franklin Street School as follows. $59,500 for the lump sum base bid and a not-to-exceed amount of $12,100 for additional remediation work as directed by plant operations for a total not to exceed $71,600 funding from the one-time funds being transferred to a deferred maintenance account,
I'll second that. Any questions or comments on this motion? Ms. Zim?
I would just like to make a comment, and some of you already made it. I think that when we visited the school, it was very impressive to see what a great, I think it's a great improvement for our district. I think that it's a much better, going to be a wonderful building when they finish with it. And financially, it's going to be savings as well. So I'm delighted when we make progress like that. It's encouraging because money is always an issue. So thank you, Mr. Donovan, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for your hard work and for taking the time to show us so that we could, so that we could enjoy knowing that improvements are being made.
I would echo Mrs. Zim's comments. And thank you, Mr. Donovan and Mr. Smith, for all your work in putting this together because in the long run, we are going to save money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. And for members who haven't seen the building but wanted to, please reach out to Mr. Donovan and let him know. I don't know when it will be safe to see it again, if work starts, but I'm sure that we can figure something out. Okay, Ms. Bishop, can you please take the role?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Okay. Motion passes.
Move to accept and place on file the March transfer report.
Second.
Thanks, Ms. Brown and Ms. Oden.
And just so you know, we're in pretty good shape at this point.
That's encouraging. Okay, Ms. Bishop?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Is that a yes?
I think there's a problem with your speaker volume or something because I, mic volume, right? I'm not technical.
I know, but I have this up loud. You're screaming in my ear.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'll try and talk softer. All right, I just want to make sure your voice gets heard, for the record. So, thank you, Ms. Bishop. All right.
I believe our next meeting is May 11th.
Okay, thank you. Great, so the next item on our agenda is the Committee on Policy. Ms. Bishop, do you have anything for us this evening?
We don't, we respectfully gave administration space to come up with the rushed back-to-school plans. We have a couple of policies on the docket for next month. Feel free to join us if you want to participate in that committee meeting, but we will have several policies for the end of the month, next month.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Brown on curriculum?
Thank you. The Curriculum Evaluation Committee meeting has been postponed till next month. Thank you.
Thank you. And then back to you, Ms. Brown, for the Ad-Hoc Committee for the Superintendent Search.
So actually, in the back of this packet is an update number two, purely informational. We don't have anything, we didn't have any action items over the last week or two. Currently, we, as of April 15th, we have eight applications initiated. I think most of the folks, everybody here got to tune in and see our presentation of the leadership profile that was presented by BWP and Associates a week and a half ago. And it was great. Actually, Nashua had the greatest turnout of any superintendent search they've ever done for the number of people who contributed to the survey and percentage of RSVPs to their focus groups. And they've done searches for districts with over 100,000 students. So that really says something about the contributions from our community. So thank you for that, and we're going to use those profiles to find somebody great. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Ms. Brown. Just for the public's knowledge, is there a deadline for when applications have to be in by?
Yes, it's in the pack, in the informational packet that is included in the board meeting online. It is also available on our website. The deadline for applications is April 23rd. The application review and initial interviews by the consultants will take place April 24th through April 29th. And then through the month of May, the Board of Education will be conducting the candidate interviews here locally. Oh, well, they're going to be virtual on Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. And that, I know that we had voted, sorry, there's loudness in my background. I know that we had voted last month that we would go back in person for our meetings the week of May 10th. But the superintendent search meetings may still need to be on Zoom. Is that correct?
I believe the motion was actually phrased so that the meeting will, with the understanding that those meetings will be virtual because we'll be interviewing people from out of the area possibly. So I think that is the plan, that those will be virtual meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. I appreciate it. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the Committee on Human Resources. Ms. Zim, did you want to make a motion to suspend the rules since you had earlier?
Thank you. That was wonderful. I appreciate that help. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules so that we might vote on the recommendations that came forward from the committee today.
Ms. Timmons seconds it? Ms. Bishop, when you have a chance?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The first recommendation from the committee was to approve the personnel recommendation stated April 19th, as amended.
Second.
Oh, it was seconded by Ms. Timmons and Ms. Oden, so I heard Ms. Timmons first. Questions or comments?
Seeing none.
Okay, Ms. Bishop, when you're ready. Well, I don't want to be clerk. There's too much writing quickly. No one would be able to read my notes.
Because my hand is cramping up, but that's working out, isn't it? Okay, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes.
The second motion was to approve the job description instructional leader, multi-tiered system of support coaches, MTSS.
For the job description, yes?
Yes, it's a, yes, job description of the instructional leader.
I'll second that.
Any questions, comments? Dr. McKinney, would you like to, no? Sorry. That was an opportune. I apologize.
I have a question about it. Because I came in to the HR Committee a little late this afternoon. What are we, this is someone who will, I don't understand. I was trying to reframe it, and I don't, so could you very briefly explain what this is? And is it in our current budget and is it in next year's budget?
So multi-tiered systems of support and behavior and wellness is a framework for providing support to kids for their social, emotional, and mental health needs. This is a position that would oversee this effort along with all the mental health supports that are going to be put in place for kids across the district. Dr. Andre and myself, Mr. Parker, have been working with the group. Dr. Crisp on this, supported by a grant. There's a district community leadership team. We're looking to have somebody who can take on all this work and coordinate it across the district as opposed to the three superintendents being in a meeting doing that. It is not in our budget for next year. The hope is that it can be supported by SRT2 funds, but we haven't made that application to the state yet and put it in there. So when and if that time comes, we'll obviously come back to the board for approval.
And Mrs. Raymond, Mrs. Oden suggested that at some point in time, Dr. McKinney would give us an overview of exactly what the program is doing. I wasn't aware either. With pandemic, unfortunately, we lose a lot. And so he was going to give us the review at some point in time of exactly what they've done at Dr. Crisp and how they plan to move forward with it. Hopefully, the, when this, when we go to full-time meetings and their in-person meetings, the HR will start meeting and we'll maybe get, some of those things will come through HR. Okay?
Thank you, Dr. McKinney, and thank you, Mrs. Zim. Certainly, I think that the pandemic has caused quite a bit of stress to our students across the district. So I'm in favor of anything that helps them with their stress levels and helps them get to a place of readiness to learn. Because I think that that will be quite the challenge in the next six weeks and in the fall. So, Dottie, I'm sorry, Ms. Oden?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I was confused because it talks about tier, tier instruction, tier one, tier two, and tier three. If this is for social, emotional growth or problem solving, I don't know why we're using the tier system. Can anybody explain that to me?
First, can you reference what you're pointing to? Or referencing what part of the job description?
Well, let me see. I know we edited it. I asked you if, well, with administrators, teachers, students in the third line goes down to the, at the end of the third line, it says multi-tiered system of support. And what I had asked you in HR is that the tier one, tier two, tier three that we use in schools? And you said yes. And I see that as educational, instructional, academic, not social, emotional. And that's where I'm confused here.
So if you were to reference the tiers, but not in response to instruction, a tier one response for a student who's having a hard time might be a reset, rethink room, a chill zone, sitting in a reset, rethink chair. Tier two intervention might be seeing a counselor, a mental health professional. And tier three would be something at a higher level based on the student's need. So it's based on the level of need of the student, and it's a coordinated response for that student's social, emotional, and mental health needs. It's a progression across time, and it's wrapping services around kids so that they can be productive. It's not just about teaching math and reading. It's also getting kids ready to learn. So when kids come to school, they're prepared to take on their academic challenges and process the challenges that are happening outside the school and at the home.
I didn't understand that at the HR Committee. I was looking at it as instructional level, and that's what completely threw me off on that. But what this really is talking about, from what you just said, is the social, emotional well-being of the child.
Yes, wants a teacher, always a teacher, Mrs. Oden. But this is to provide mental health supports for kids, whatever way, shape, or form it might be. We're certainly looking at some virtual options, but we certainly need capacity in the district for somebody to shoulder this work and lead it across the district. Mr. Chopin, Mrs. Bagley are looking at options right now. And this is somebody who can manage the grant and manage it across the district. Currently, we have one of our behavior specialists doing this work in addition to our position right now, assessing kids. So we'd like to have a designated person across the district who can lead this work.
Thank you. As you know, I've advocated for more psychologists, if we can afford it. I certainly will support this, and I didn't, I did not support it in committee. I think I have a little better understanding of it now. But can I ask, is there anything in the grant that says, if we accept this grant, we must continue it after the grant stops funding it? This position?
Uh not at this time. We haven't entered in the grant. Oh, I see Mr. Donovan. He's dying to jump in on this. Well, let's turn it over to him.
Yes, there's, if if it's going to be S R funds, there's, there's nothing that says you have to keep positions. As Dr. McKinney said, until it gets approved within the grant, we can't even consider hiring it yet.
Okay, I I I guess I I'd like to follow that up. If it says in the grant that we have to continue it, then we wouldn't be able to fund it with S R funds, would we?
Well, we, anything that goes into S R, we would not any, any person we hire using S R funds, I would suggest we tell them at the time, this is a temporary position.
So if it said in the grant, you would have to continue this after they fund it, we would have to strike that from the grant?
It doesn't, no, it it won't say that in the grant.
Okay, but if it says it has to continue, because I know sometimes grants do that, and I'm just wondering how we would handle that.
Yeah, this, the S R grant will not say that. The S R grant points much more towards one-time funding than it does towards continual.
Okay, thank you.
One way to handle that, Mrs. Odin, is this could be a one-year position, or you could post it as a two-year position pending grant funds. And then after that, you know, determination could be made whether to continue it, supported by grant funds, you know, folded into the budget, or no longer support the position.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McKinney, and thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Anybody else? All right, I don't see anybody. Uh Ms. Bishop, go ahead.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Motion passes.
My final motion is to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two teacher principal renomination list dated four nineteen twenty-one as amended.
Second? I'll second. Ms. Dean, did you want to say anything about this? Did anyone have any questions?
Not really. Unless, if anybody has one, I'm sure Dr. McKinney is happy to answer.
Thank you. I just wanted to recognize um Dr. McKinney and the um Dana O'Gara, who started on your job this week. The rest of the HR staff who really pulled together to get this done in the middle of also planning for this week, going back to school. Um and this is a little, I think it's a little bit earlier than we usually do it. Um so I know that that was a huge undertaking, um but I'm so glad to be able to get that done and have our staff um know that we want them to stay. So I feel like that's always a nice thing to do, um and especially in the middle of a pandemic when teaching um in all educating is been extremely difficult. So thank you to everybody who worked on this. That's all I wanted to say. Anybody else? Okay, Ms. Bishop?
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
I need to abstain to avoid a conflict of interest.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dean.
That's it.
Okey-dokey. Um do we have any liaison reports tonight? Ms. Timmons?
I don't have a report, but I want to announce that we will have a meeting with the student reps on May nineteenth at three P M.
Okay, so the next uh meeting with the reps you said was May nineteen? Um and that is not a public meeting, that is? Okay. Okay, anybody else? Um I just want to remind everybody that the next meeting of the J S S B C is this Thursday night um where we will be talking about um the renovations to fairgrounds, which are winding down um and the renovations to penitent check, which are winding up. Um so I I learned today that there will be nothing on it on the new middle school this Thursday. Um it's only those two projects at this point. So that's all I have. Uh any other reports that I've missed? Okay, seeing none. Uh do we have any unfinished business tonight that didn't make it on the agenda? Okay, I don't see anybody. Uh so on to new business. Um the first thing for new business is um the Nashua in-person and remote learning handbook which is amazing that you guys were able to accelerate um getting this out um instead of getting it out for May tenth that you were able to get it out for today. So uh thank you very much, Dr. McKinney. Would you like to kind of speak to it, walk us through it? Um I'm sorry. Also, thank you to Mr. Parker and Miss and Dr. Andre. So you know, all of you guys were instrumental in getting this done. Dr. McKinney?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President, and certainly big thank you to um Ms. Cancela, um who's been on her third or fourth revision of this um document, feels like the tenth or eleventh. Uh it began as our reopening plan, was on its way to being our hybrid plan, and then uh quickly turned around into be our in-person and remote handbook. A number of principals, departments, uh district office, leadership team have reviewed and revised this. If there are omissions, it was not uh done on a malintent. It's, we've looked at it so many times. Sometimes you overlook things. There was one edit that was brought to my attention that I'd like to recommend uh tonight before uh it's adopted. It's on page uh six, under Staff Expectations.
Okay.
Uh we want to strike paste uh post all work assigned for the following week by the end of the day each Friday. Uh the revision should be um, teachers will provide actually, I'm gonna double check with my trusty friend, Ms. Cancela. There she is.
Ensure three days of substitute plans are available.
So strike the entire sentence and change it to ensure three days. I'm sorry, substitute?
Substitute plans are available.
Are there any objections to this revision from members of the board? Okay, seeing none, we have consensus on that revision.
Uh was there another revision from today, Ms. Cancela, or is that all?
I believe that was it.
We've passed this document back and forth so many times, we're not sure.
I don't know how you do it.
I see it in my sleep.
Nightmare, huh?
Uh so, Ms. Raymond, could you just read that um section one more time to ensure we have it captured correctly?
Okay, so I wrote down, uh so for staff expectations, the first bullet is not changed. It says communicate with students and families. The second bullet now says ensure three days of substitute plans are available. And then the fourth bullet is regarding teacher conferences being held via Zoom and I'm sorry, the third bullet. And the fourth bullet says be flexible and understanding. So, good? Okay. Okay, um we all had a chance to look at this over the weekend. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments about the handbook? Uh Ms. Bishop?
Just uh, because I, you know, you always have people read your essays backwards to catch spelling mistakes. On page eight, under the athletic section, practices will not begin prior to two thirty P M. At the high schools and not before three P M. At the middle schools during hybrid model. Did we need that? So can we just take it just not before three P M. At the middle schools and end the sentence there?
Yep.
Okay.
Any objections from the board? Okay, we have consensus on that change as well, striking the words during the hybrid model.
Is there a motion on the floor to approve it, the handbook?
Not yet. Would you like to make that motion?
No move.
Okay, so the motion to approve it is made by Ms. Dean. Uh do we have?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown? I'm gonna write down Ms. Brown, because that's what I think it was. Okay, any other questions or comments regarding the remote learning handbook? I'm sorry, I said it wrong. The Nashua School District Spring twenty twenty-one in-person and remote handbook. Okay. Wow, all right. Good job, everyone, for reading this. Um so the motion on the floor is to approve the Nashville School District Spring twenty twenty-one in-person and remote handbook. It was primaried by Ms. Dean, seconded by Ms. Brown. Um and I don't see any questions. So uh Ms. Bishop?
Okay, on the motion to accept the handbook, uh Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Uh yes, but do we need to note the changes?
I'm sorry, yes, as a, we do.
Okay, as amended.
Uh Ms. Dean, are you accept, are you comfortable?
That's fine.
amended? Ms. Brown, are you okay, seconding as amended? Right, we'll do a friendly friendly amendment.
Thank you.
Is that acceptable?
Does anyone want to change their vote with the amended? Okay. So, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Okay, motion passes.
Right, so, uh good job, guys. Uh I did have uh one question that's kind of ancillary, like sort of related to the handbook, but not really related to the handbook. Um and that is regarding um our motion earlier this year um to follow the um School Nurses Association's guidelines for COVID. Um and so I guess my question is, um do we need to do anything with that motion? I didn't see anything in the handbook that contradicted the School Nurses Association's recommendations for COVID. Um and so my understanding is we have been following it thus far. Um so is that, and do we need to make any changes to that motion, or are we good to go continuing it through the rest of the year? Anyone have any thoughts on that? Dr. McKinney?
I I believe we're good, but I can double check with Public Health and Gina tomorrow. Uh I haven't heard anything. I know the uh Public Health and the nurses met today, so it's likely if that was a conflict, it would have came up, but let me uh follow up on that and get back to the board.
Okay, thank you so much. I I pulled it out and like compared them, and I didn't see any conflicts. Um so, but with everybody being back in school as of today, I just wanted to know. I have one more question that is also ancillaryly related to this tangentially, so tangentially. Um and that is, how did school go today?
Well, depends on who you ask, but I've only heard good things. Certainly, uh allow Mr. Parker and Dr. Andre, who uh were out at schools today, follow up. Uh Mr. Parker?
Hey, good evening, everyone. I went to uh all three middle schools, and I went to uh north of and I will go to south tomorrow, uh sit in on some classes, uh walk the halls with the principals, met with teachers, some who have not been in the building for over a year. And everyone seemed glad to be there. We were hunkling. Um the kids seemed happy, the teachers seemed happy, and the staff seemed happy to be back, and they made a point, many of them, to tell me that. And so I think it was a successful opening day. You know, I'm sure there were hiccups I was not aware of, but um overall, uh by all appearances, um it was a good start. It was a good start, and folks seemed happy and relieved to be back in uh the building and to see folks. And the kids were great, so uh I was reminded how big eighth graders can be. Uh but they were doing their thing, and so once we got back in the groove and in the building, you know, we were on autopilot. We know how to, we know how to take care of kids. And uh so uh it was good to be there. It's a good use of time this morning, so.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Dr. Andre?
I can uh echo Mr. Parker's comments. I was able to visit um one or two schools earlier this morning and was in communication with all the building um administrators. And again, it was a positive day, a lot of positive energy, students happy to be back in the classroom to see their friends. The teachers were energetic and very welcoming. So I again, kudos to the board, the administration, our teachers, and our students for having a really successful opening, and I'm confident we'll continue just to thrive as as we close out the school year.
Thank you, Dr. Andre, and uh thank you both for going and um visiting all the schools today um so that I assume it was for other reasons, but I appreciate that you did that so that you could come and and kind of give us a little snapshot um of what things were like for kids today. Um, okay, so the next item on our agenda is a non-public for negotiations. Um I like to suggest that we have it at the end. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. Um I I agree, we we should do um public comments first. Um I did notice that in our earlier public comments, that there was a person from the public who who shouted out insult to someone else that was speaking at the time. Um I know that um we've had discussions about what people can say and what they can't say. However, I do know that no one has the right to disrupt our meetings. And if any person from the public decides to shout out when it's not their terms, uh when it's not their turn turn to speak, this board does have the right to remove anyone, and I think Ms. Cancela should just boot them out if they decide to disrupt the meeting. That's what I'm suggesting. So, but I I do agree with what you're about to do, which is put public public uh speaking first and then do the non-public after.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. So um we are treating this um just as we would a regular board meeting in the building. Um so people who shout out of turn or are disruptive um will be asked to leave or will be removed from the meeting. It's, I asked at the beginning to, you know, show uh some respect to other people when they're speaking, and that is not acceptable. We wouldn't accept it from our students, and um I won't accept it from adults here in this meeting. So, uh please wait your turn. I understand if, you know, you get off mute and there's loudness in your house, that's one thing. We'll ask you um politely to mute yourself, but uh we don't call names or shout out at people. It's not acceptable. Okay, um so we, do we have consensus on moving negotiation to the end? Ms. Brown?
I think we should make a formal motion to amend the agenda.
Sure. Would would you like me to make it?
Sure.
Okay, uh I move that we move negotiation updates from where it is now on the agenda to the end of the agenda so that people don't have to wait.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Okay, Ms. Bishop?
On the motion to move public comment earlier, uh Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Move it later.
No, we're doing public comment now, and then the negotiations after.
Great, but the motion was to move the negotiations to later.
Oh. So on that motion, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
I used it here because it was on mute, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay. Okay. With that said, then I'd like to begin our public comment period. Again, we have 15 minutes for public comments. I'm asking people to refrain from making racist or sexist or otherwise offensive comments or statements during this time. Refraining from talking about people's personal lives and kind of try to stick to things affecting our students and staff. I'm going to go down the list I made of people who are here in the order in which they have arrived. I've been trying to write people down as I hear the ding that they're coming in. So again, if you could state your name, your address, and keep your comments to two minutes, I would appreciate it. So Ms. Prince?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Sonia Prince, 49, Tufts Drive. I apologize, I didn't say that earlier. As of Friday, there were 254 known cases of COVID-19 in New Hampshire schools and 19 cases were in staff members. 235 were students. And that's up from 128 cases from just five days prior on Monday. That was on WMUR. And the schools were holding clinics. So my question is, is the plan the same as January metrics set? And that you voted on, since I heard Mr. McKinney mention earlier that August 20th rules applied for the sports stuff and the masks? Or has it changed to wait till people just get sick and clusters spread? And then you call an emergency meeting? I'd like to know about that. We all know working parents send sick kids to school. So if we are waiting for cases in clusters, then what is the magic number that will alarm us to call an emergency meeting and keep the students and staff safe? Since students under 16 are not vaccinated and now they're getting sick and hospitalized with the UK variant. And the other eight variants are falling close behind. And I'm sure they're going to cause havoc unfortunately in the fall or around that time. They don't know for sure, but it is something that I'm concerned about. And is the school district planning to set aside funds for medical expenses for students, staff, or family members who do get sick? And especially that we don't have a day to clean anymore and it's five days a week. That is a problem. I don't feel that our governor has our kids' or residents' safety at heart. The hospitalizations and new case numbers are higher now than when Sununu first put his mask order in place last fall. So that is a big red flag to me. He is running for senate and he is studying the data from former Kelly Arts loss. She lost by 1,000 votes. So I don't think that schools opening five days a week and removing the mask order was done by accident. And I don't think it has anything to do with the safety of anyone. So I hope you consider that when you make your decisions, that everything he does or says doesn't mean it's right for us.
Ms. Prince, thank you. Okay, I don't know if I have my timer thing loud enough, so I'm going to turn it up. All right, the next person on my list of people as they arrived was Reagan Lampier. Ms. Lampier? Did you wish to make a comment at this time? Is she still here? Ms. Lampier is not coming off mute, so I'm going to assume that she does not have a comment at this time. Next is Suzanne Vale.
And? I don't have a comment at this time. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Ms. Vale. Alissa Houston?
Good evening. I wanted to come on really quick and just to say a really heartfelt and warm thank you to the administrators and the staff and those Board of Ed members. You, I know that this was not an easy thing for any of this, for any of us for the last year. But with the correspondence that I got today from, you know, my youngest son who, you know, really struggled with the idea of going back to school. The feedback has been fantastic, watching all of the photos of the kids returning to school, all of the parents. It really was so heartwarming to see and knowing that the teachers really had had their six and they were out in full force. It proves that, you know, as a community, we can do this. You can do it all together. We just kind of have to meet together. So I appreciate the votes from the Board of Ed in support of the students. I appreciate the teachers and the staff. And I appreciate the kids. And I feel like they deserve a huge kudos. Because going back today was probably scarier than going back had they gone back in the fall and because of all the buildup. So I just wanted to say congratulations Nashua, congratulations kids, congratulations staff, administration, all of you on the board. It's been an amazing opportunity for these kids and looking forward to seeing where we go from here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Houston. Okay, that was good. Ms., let's see, Christina Johns, did you have a comment at this time?
Um, I'm not, I just wanted to say that I am glad that that one person who shouted out, I believe some insulting thing. I think either he left immediately or you guys dropped him. I think obviously that's really important. And as you've been saying, Ms. Raymond, there is no place for the racist sexist, any kind of prejudiced comments. I feel like it's good that you guys are on that at this point and dropping those people as soon as it comes out of their mouths because that's just harmful beyond words to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next person on my list is State Rep. Lanzara, which I apologize if I've pronounced that incorrectly. Did you have a comment, Mr. Lanzara? He is staying on mute, so I'm going to go to the next person. And that is a caller with the last four digits of 2083. If you could please unmute yourself using star six. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. Lou Juris here from 56 Haynes Street. I heard good things today from my, my daughter who attends Nashua North. And it sounds like what I've heard so far, so far, so good. Beyond that, at this point, I don't have any further comment. Thank you for letting me in.
Okay, thank you so much. Have a good evening.
You're welcome.
Okay, and then the last person that I have is caller, last four digits is 8413. If you could please press star six to unmute yourself and then state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Wendy Keith. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Keith.
Hi, my name is Wendy Keith, eight Margaret Circle here in Nashua. I have a son at Nashua South. I wanted to first thank Lisa Jingerus for her presentation, the support that she has had all year of all of our student athletes. I also wanted to bring to the attention of the board on behalf of the football coaches and the football programs, both at Nashua South and at Nashua North. Thanking both coaches Knight, Lorende, and all of their assistant coaches to recognize these scholar athletes from both of those football programs. I believe there were five at North and two at South. There are 40 total in all divisions from all football divisions in the state of New Hampshire. They are Lucas Cunningham, Max Ackerman, Liam Novak, Spencer Whiting, Curtis Harris Lopez from North, Jason Campo, and Christopher Keith from Nashua South. It's an amazing accomplishment to have those kinds of grades in the classroom and accomplishments on the field. Huge kudos. And the fact they had to do this with all that was asked for them during this pandemic is even more incredible. The, these football players, these athletes will do everything you tell them to, especially with what they are given. Ms. Brown, Ms. Zim, Ms. Odin, thank you for your continued support of Ms. Jingerus's initiatives, for the support of student athletes. I wish the rest of you who want to follow what the Department of Health says all year and then all of a sudden in the spring decide that what they say isn't important. Again, you guys are in a position of power and you're holding it over these kids and it is not fair. They are doing everything they are saying that you are asking of them and more. And again, you don't have their best interests at heart and it's really disheartening. And they know it and they feel it and it's really unfortunate. But for the rest of you, the other three, and Ms. Johnson, who's not here tonight, I appreciate and they appreciate your support. And I would like to hear you thank these seven young gentlemen. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Keith, and thank you for bringing those athletes to our attention. Being scholar athletes is a wonderful achievement. And congratulations to all of our scholar athletes. Okay, Ms. Cancela, did I miss anybody? Oh, I see one more. I see the caller, wait, 0714. If you could unmute yourself by pressing star six. There you are. Go ahead. Yep, please state your name.
Hi. Yes, hi, my name is Renee Lyas Classy. I live at 32 Deer Haven Drive. I just wanted to say for the record that I was, I was concerned that there was no option presented to the board by the administration to move forward with the plans to return to school after the teachers had at least received their second vaccine. Concerned about the health of our teachers. Every parent and child has the option to be able to return to school or not and teachers do not have that option. So I was kind of surprised that we were not given the option to move forward to seek a waiver, as so many other communities have done, to move forward with the May date for returning to school full strength. I do support returning to school full strength. I just, I just thought we could have waited the two weeks, the two classroom weeks. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening. Okay. I don't see any other numbers that I didn't already have written down. Ms. Cancela, do you see anyone?
I see no new callers.
Okay, thank you so much. So that concludes our second public comment period of the evening. At this point, I'd like to go ahead and have board member comments. And then after that, not adjourned, but instead have our non-public session. Dr. McKinney, we have no motions after this non-public session, correct? It's just updates? Okay, so, so that's what I would like to do. Any objections? I think that is in line with our motion. Okay, so board member comments. If we can go in order of voting, please. I think that's the easiest. Ms. Bishop, can you let us know? Because I forget.
Yeah, I'm just re-writing it right now. Do everything by hand. So I'm first. I actually don't have many comments, but I do want to give a huge shout out to the teachers and the staff who made coming back to school today a great experience for the kids. I know the synchronous learning piece was probably a challenge, but had minimal complaints from the kids I know that are home. But wanted to thank everybody and thank the district and thank the parents for all working together. I think we had a fantastic opportunity this last year to practice resilience. I know some people's mental health has been challenged, but other people have really risen to this challenge and have been able to grow in spite of the hardships. And I think this has been a fantastic opportunity to realize what our community is capable of, what resources we actually had at our disposal that we were able to tap into. And the amazing things we can do when we're creative and flexible and can meet the needs of all the students instead of being cookie cutter. So I'm really proud of us as a district, so. Those are my comments. The next person is Ms. Julia.
I, as I said before, I'm disappointed that the governor mandated that we go back to school earlier than May 10th, which would have been two weeks after our staff would have had the opportunity to have had their second vaccine and recover from that. However, I would like to thank everyone in the district, teachers, staff, students, administrators, parents for helping today to go as well as it did. I could hear the children at New Throw School out to recess from my yard today and it was a great sound. I appreciated it. So thank you, everyone.
Next is Ms. Raymond.
Thanks, thank you, Ms. Julia. That's, I love hearing the kids outside as well. So I just have a couple of quick comments. I'm going to echo what my board members have already said about just the amazing effort that has been put forth by our district leadership and all of our educators, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our speech pathologists, our nurses, and our guidance counselors and all the people that I'm missing right now as well. It was, it is an extraordinary thing to come together and come back in these circumstances. And we, we were ordered to do so by the governor. We have very specific rules in that governor's order about closing if we needed to do that because of an outbreak. But I'm hopeful that we will be able to follow the mask and the social distancing guidances, guidance that we have from Public Health and in our ordinance so that everyone can stay as safe as possible. Second, there second is summer plans. I spoke with Dr. McKinney. I know that everyone is working hard on summer school plans and we will have an update for that probably the next meeting. So I look forward to that next time. I know everyone's getting anxious for the end of school. And lastly, I just wanted to just bring people's attention to the fact that the school lunch and breakfast and lunch plans have changed again. The new plans for how to get free breakfast and lunch if you are a remote student are on our website. It's only a couple of days a week. It's also good to know that the Grow Nashua program and the Greater Nashville Food Council have some other programs for free produce at various locations around the city. So it's worth looking at their websites to find out where those are if you need them. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Up next, Ms. Odin.
Okay, thank you. This is my 12th year serving as a board member and certainly was most unconventional, unconventional and the most difficult. A lot of votes I took. It was hard to make a decision, to decide a yes or a no. We have people on every side of every issue and it was, it was difficult. And we had kids that were thriving with remote and we had kids that were having tremendous difficulties. We couldn't, we couldn't please everyone and that's what you want to do. You want to do what's best for all kids and we couldn't do that. So hopefully things are smoother. I want to thank administration, Dr. McKinney, Dr. Andre, Mr. Parker for all their work. This hasn't been easy. It's been challenging. It was a lot sooner than any of us had thought it was going to be. I'm sorry our teachers couldn't get the second shot and have that time to feel more secure in the schools. I want to thank all the teachers, all the nurses, the students, the parents. It has been trying for everyone. But as Ms. Bishop said, I hope there's been a learning process for everyone, resiliency. Just, just trying to get through difficult instances in life. Hopefully they're not, they're not a year and a quarter from here. But I want to thank everybody. I know everything's not going to be perfect. You know, Dr. McKinney told us it's not going to be perfect the first day. It will be better the second day and it will improve the third day, so. So I, I thank you for all your patience, parents and, and students. And hopefully we'll finish the year in, in really good shape. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Next on the list is Ms. Brown.
Thank you. I had a comment prepared, but I don't think it's going to serve its purpose right now. So I'm going to shift a little bit and make one brief thing. If these transitions are hard, I'm really so proud of this school district. I'm proud that we've, not proud, I am glad that everyone has the opportunity now to make the choice that's right for the, for their family. And I think with both the transitions that are happening for teachers, students, parents, members of the community, I, I want the thought to go out there that it's okay to not be okay. And if you are struggling at this time with anything, please reach out to someone, call someone, send an email, make a phone call. It's okay if this, if you have been in survival mode for a while, for a long time. And keep pushing forward. For those people that this week has come as a giant relief, that's great. And I also want to keep that momentum going in a positive fashion and just say how grateful I am to the teachers for whom I know it's difficult, for the parents and the kids. Thank you so much for for embracing this transition period and also for a great day. I know my own kid came home tired, which is good, and also in a great mood. And I see so many happy faces and, you know, there was a little hiccup with one of the school buses, but it worked out great. And I actually met a new kid in my neighborhood that I didn't even know lived there. So that was really cool. And I'm glad that we're going to be seeing those happy faces of joy on kids. And we're going to make it to the end of the school year. And I'm just grateful to all the staff, administrators, teachers, parents and kids that are making it all happen. Thank you to the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Brown. Next on the list is Mr. Guarino.
Thank you. I just have something real quick to say. I just want to thank Mr. Parker for emailing us the, uh, the Sunset Heights Virtual Choir, Virtual Chorus. I was listening to them. Excellent. It just goes to show that our, our teachers in this past year have been making the best of their situation. So we have kids in choir, even though it's remote, they're still learning. And that's just one example, but that's been happening throughout the district that our teachers have been making the best of their situation. Teaching our kids via, via the internet. And our, and our, learning has been happening, even though people, you know, keep saying, well, everybody's behind and learning has been going on and now we get to go back in on the, you know, today was, was beginning of, and we're transitioning back in. And so I just want to thank all the teachers and the parents for what they've done to, to continue and, and to get through this crisis. And Sunset Heights is a great school. My kids went there and they were, they were in the chorus too. So thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Next is Ms. Zim.
I just want to wish everybody a happy vacation week. I hope we all come back refreshed and ready to climb the mountain again. Keep truckin', right? Thank you all for being who you are.
Thank you, Ms. Zim. Ms. Timmons?
Zim took my life. Ms. Zim, you took my life.
Bye.
Wish everybody a happy vacation. I just wanted to point one thing out. The teachers did not have the choice to go back. And that's unfortunate, but it is what it is and I accept that. But I wish you all a great vacation. Have fun. Don't think about the board. Don't think about anything, just do your own thing.
Feel the sunshine.
That's it, Ms. Raymond.
All right, thank you, everybody. So we have nothing else except for our non-public. And I just want to congratulate everybody despite our talkativeness. It is 8:04 and we only have one item left on our agenda and it is the non-public. So kudos to everybody for not being here till 10:30. I might be saying this a little early, but I have confidence that we can make it through the non-public before then. So at this point, I am looking for a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91832E.
So moved.
Okay. The motion was by Ms. Bishop. Seconded by Ms. Oden.
Okay, on the motion to go onto non-public, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Julia?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay.
At 8:05.
Thank you so much. So 8:05 PM, we are in non-public.